I'd like to call the Board of Library Trustees. Meeting of Tuesday, June 27, 2023, to order at 6:48 PM. Has everyone had a chance to read over the minutes from our last meeting in May?
Yes.
I'll say it. Okay, could somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept amendments and I would like to discuss some.
Okay, somebody second?
Second.
Okay, what would you like to discuss?
Okay, under the Director's Report, other, it said, refer to handout. Karen said that the funds of the Mass Cultural Council Cultural Sector Recovery Grant in the amount of $42,520 have been received by the library. And I thought what was said is that have been awarded but not received.
No, we've received them, yeah.
You did receive them? Oh, okay, thank you, I misunderstood.
All right, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Director's Report, please?
Yep.
My apologies, family.
We are recording, just so you know. Recording.
One has a question.
I apologize, there was one other question I had on the gutter under the report. What's the matter?
Go ahead.
It said, we shouldn't use the corn gutters because they cannot have leaf gusms stalls on them? Is that the reason? I thought there was a different reason.
That's one of the reasons, yeah. Yeah, because there was other issues as well.
I thought that wasn't anyone in the subject.
Okay. Karen?
Yep. Anybody have any questions about May statistics or financial or programming?
I just have one question on the statistics. The new patrons, the big jump, is that from bringing in the kindergarteners and preschoolers?
Yeah.
That's great, thanks.
Yep. Couple things about June so far. Obviously, we started summer reading, we had kickoff on the 16th, went very smoothly. Joe, who's in charge of the global mini golf, always does a great job. He, you know, he has things down pat, he's, you know, been here before too. So there were a couple hole in ones, kids love that. We have some summer reading programs already starting before the July 4 holiday. Jess just had her first weekly graphics novels program, went well, I think she had like 10 kids. We have Davis Bates coming on the 28th, that's a Hanson Cultural Council program. And we're wrapping up yoga, but we're gonna start, we've already talked to Whitman Wellness, we're gonna start it again in September on the 9th.
Saturday mornings.
Yes, yeah.
I have a question about the programming. I used to get an email that would have like, sign up for these things and then you could go on and register. Are those still going out?
Yeah.
I'm not getting those anymore.
Oh, all right, I can check and see.
Is it, do you check your spam?
Yeah, I mean, I've been doing it for years, you know, you can go, you just register and it has each of the things that you click on.
Yeah, well, like, we, twice a month, we send out the newsletter, e-newsletter that goes out.
So is it embedded in the newsletter?
Yes.
They're not two separate emails?
No.
All right, I'll look in the newsletter.
Coming up in July, we have Mama Steph is gonna be here Wednesdays. We have Puppet Through Me to You Puppetry is here Fridays, that's Hanson Cultural Council. We're having a creative writing workshop, the theme for summer reading is Find Your Voice, so we're trying to do things related to that. We have mental health advocate Dana Altman is gonna be here. She has a book which she, she shares her mental health journey and then she also incorporates baking, so I thought that was really interesting, so that's good for teens and adults.
I saw her. It might have been NBCN News and then I heard her on NPR, excellent. Yeah, and I bought the book.
Teens and adults, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's how she handled, she was suffering from depression. And so I think it'll be great for young people to hear her. Because, I mean, she's probably in her mid-20s.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's young.
Oh, really?
So I think she, you know, would make a good impression for people. I was very impressed by her.
And then, as we've mentioned, the foundation, last foundation meeting, Trivia, is going very well, sign up. So that's looking to be another success this year. Building maintenance, so Jude's been, you know, doing a great job sprucing up the grounds, doing a lot of organizing of, you know, different spaces, getting equipment that needs, doing small maintenance projects and then coordinating with the town facilities manager and outside companies to do larger projects. I'm pleased to announce that we've hired Percy Child for the Adult News Services Support Librarian Position. He's gonna be starting on July 10.
Congratulations.
Yep, so we're very excited about that.
What's his background?
So he graduated college a couple years ago. He has experience in public and academic libraries. He's worked at East Bridgewater and Randolph, so he knows our circulation system. He's very personable, very passionate about libraries. Julie and I both, you know, agreed he was an excellent fit. He has some experience with teens, so that's good, we wanna, you know, draw that crowd in. Yeah, he just, and excellent feedback from references, just very extremely positive, so.
What was his last name, person?
A child.
Child.
Yeah. So we're excited for that. We have launched an unpaid internship program as part of our volunteer program. So we're hoping to get some students to do maybe like one to three month project, if, you know, work on some, you know, it'll be approved by either me and Julia, and they would work on some sort of project related to what they're interested in and related to libraries, so.
What are the ages for that?
I don't know if we set, I think we were thinking like high school and up, so, yeah.
Where's the application go?
It's just on the volunteer application, the regular, yeah. It's, Julia added it to that, so. And then we are, we've created a welcome letter and brochure for new homeowners, so we're looking at the recent home buyers and are gonna be sending out things to them. And then going forward, trying to do that every month to let people know. Because one of the things that came out of the focus groups, which is, you know, in the past, all libraries experience this, but, you know, people just don't know what we have, so we wanna try to get out there to more people. And then we do have installed an opioid rescue kit at the library. Fire Department's gonna be training any staff that are interested in that, so.
Is that NARCAN? Like, basically, you're learning how to administer NARCAN?
Yeah.
Can you let me know when that is? Because if I'm old, I'd like just to come and talk.
Okay, sure.
I have something on the programming.
Okay, yeah.
On the newsletter, I did get it in the mail and showed my family at a recent family event. And they were very pleased to see my mother's picture in the newsletter. And they said, thank you very much.
Thank you.
John told me he worked on the book play.
Yes, yes, yeah. All right, any other questions?
I have something on financial.
Okay, yeah.
I was just gonna ask you to explain what is in red.
So, yeah, so sometimes individual lines will be, will be down, but as long as we don't go over our total expenses, we're okay.
All right.
Yeah.
You may have, you've recapped some of the June programs.
Mm-hmm.
And you didn't mention the college seminar, college savings seminar?
Unfortunately, we only had one person who came, so, yeah. Maybe we're gonna try it another time if we can to. Yeah, it was a little tight with our notice, I think. So if we had, give it more, give it more me time to advertise.
Did you advertise through the schools?
Yes, we did, yeah. But it was kind of, obviously, toward the end of school year, so.
I, firstly, I don't know if anyone else feels this way, so maybe it's never a brief discussion. When you have a presenter like that from a company, you're giving the person exclusive access to potential clients and doing pre-advertising. I don't know if this person came and approached you to do the program, but my personal preference, I think, would generally be if it's in line with the use of the community room, to have the person book that and do the advertising him or herself. I don't know how anyone else feels about it.
Well, I've taken part in Credit for Life a few times when I worked at the bank. One was at Sao Chau Bo Tech and they made all the arrangements, brought everyone in. And, you know, the, my son was one of the kids that came through. They had to rent an apartment, but they were told what their job was, how much they made, so they had to rent an apartment, furnish it, do all that. So they went around and, you know, we questioned them, made suggestions. And we didn't, like, we didn't take names or anything. Because it cancels its business, but I'm not sure what department in the school, but they made the arrangements, they offered the tables, and then you set up however you wanted your little display.
I think that's a little different because you did have different representatives.
Right.
And a good difference, if they didn't make contacts.
Right.
You know, our presenters are getting a database of potential clients.
Okay.
So that's one difference from what you said.
Yeah, well, maybe we can do it differently?
Well, we don't give the performers the contact information of the pageant.
But the people, they have exclusive access to this group of potential clients.
Yeah, Jude, well, that was a concern, my, Julie and I did look over the material and it was generic and we, you know, we sit to all the person, you can't hand out any items. Like, you can have stuff on a table, like a business card or whatever, you can't actively, like,
Hand out.
Hand out things or talk about your company and, like, you have to say that there's, like, other options for these, you know.
Who was, who was it that came in?
It was from Edward Jones.
Okay, yeah, I, I think more if you even talk to some of the different schools that do Credit for Life, kind of go that way.
Yeah.
I just wanna argue in favor of having people like that come in. They're giving their time.
Yes.
I do it all the time, you know, I'm an attorney. I spend time prepping, I give a pro bono course, people are getting free legal advice, they're teaching them what it is that they need to look for. Some will come to me later and ask for, you know, help with their nonprofits. Others will go to other people and that's okay, but it is an amazing amount of free information for people. It gets them thinking, it gets them sort of like, you know, especially the credit stuff or the elder law. I mean, that one's really key, it's been super well received. It doesn't bother me that somebody might get some business from it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Especially if you're handling it with like, you know, here's my contact if you want to contact me. There's a lot of other elder care lawyers or whatever out there.
Yeah, I think it just depends on the, you know, individual company coming into what.
It's probably better to have a few people, so they're not just getting information from one person. And, you know, it's, it's good information that's handed out and how they receive it and what they do with it. You know, they're on their own, but.
You may have fewer people want to do it if they're, like, I probably, if somebody said, here, you wanna sit next to two other attorneys and give this information, it's not worth my time, right? But, you know, I would do it if, you know, if I can do it, my presentation, which I already have done.
Yeah.
Right, if I have to, like, redo it so that it fits with other people and more time and do it for free, you just may not bring those people into giving that, sort of, it's part of my time.
Okay, well, Credit for Life is a little bit different where they come up to your booth. And you're kind of, you're not like all lined up together, you're separated. So if you're having, if I'm having a conversation with Karen and you're over there doing your lawyer thing, you can't hear me.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
Yeah.
But, go ahead, Diane.
I do agree with Teresa in the getting the information out. That's what the library is all about, getting information out for free to the public. And would it be worthwhile to maybe put together almost a wish list of topics that, you know, you may feel that is needed in the community? Or, you know, maybe even doing an impromptu poll? You know, for example, you know, speaking of attorneys, people not realizing how important it is to get certain paperwork done when your children turn 18. And that having somebody come to educate and then if they wanna meet with that attorney that came to talk about it or they wanna reach out because they already know Teresa and so they're gonna have Teresa help them or another family attorney, they can do that. But I think it's an important thing is to look and see what are the needs for education out there.
Right.
And I think we already do this, but having a disclaimer, like, this program is not indoor, you know, like, this particular person or is not endorsed by the government, this is a free information site, you know, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And like you said, you reviewed all the materials, make sure that they kept it generic so that there wasn't any feeling that there was a sale pitch going on.
Right, right, yeah.
So.
Okay.
I think there might be a difference between sales and education and services too, right? Like, services, like, people who provide services to people versus people who are like selling essential oils or, you know, different things like that, that seems like a different category. Whereas if somebody has a service to provide information about finances, legal things, medical things, whatever, that's a different point.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else before you? All right, moving back to gutters. So I have the swatches, I don't know if anybody, if you haven't got a chance to look at them if you wanted to. I mocked off the two colors that I was thinking of, I do have a preference, but I didn't know if anybody else.
Is your preference a secret?
No, it's bronze, it's called, but it's actually kind of, it's dark, so we were thinking a darker one would be better for not showing dirt and.
Was that one called? Was that one of the ones I picked?
That was bronze.
Bronze.
Yes.
And then the other one is musket brown, I think it's called, but it's, it's a little lighter and, I don't know, I just felt that the darker one was, and I, when I held it up to, because it's very dark green, that, so it's almost like black and that's kind of similar, so I think that would look much better.
Yeah, I agree.
On the way, even if you look, it's very limited, but there are some gutters and downspouts. And I think the bronze might be approximately.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't show, yeah, I looked at it and I looked back.
It looked a lot like it, yeah.
So unless there's any other objections, I would recommend bronze, we go with that. Make a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept bronze as the color pink for the gutters. It's under the second name. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You may have missed, thank you.
All right, great. Collection Development Policy, so this is a draft that you looked at before. The only thing, I think you had a question, Linda, and I did speak to Mar Deedy at the MBLC. The question was in regards to withdrawing under, I believe it's under collection maintenance. It says, withdrawing items may be donated, sold or discarded. So I asked her about, and she sent me a reference to a law that says, it talks about things having resale or salvage value, that's really the only law. And she said that that doesn't typically include books. So that withdrawal of books is up to the individual library's policies, so, decision. So she said that's not an issue really with having to declare surplus for books, so. So are there any other?
It's not called value.
Yeah, well, that's what she said, there's not really any, like, substantial value to a used book.
But as Diane pointed out, it's been, how about discussion in the past?
Yeah, I mean, we're typically getting rid of the book because it has outdated information or it's, like, damaged or so, it's not really of value to.
How about doesn't always understand?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the Hanson Public Library Collection Development Policy.
I'll second that.
Is there any more concerned questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, you may have missed.
Where did the draft come from?
I did, so I, yeah, so I look at different, like, different library policies and I kind of get together, like, what are the main subjects that we need to discuss and then take different wording and incorporate it.
Yeah, I thought it was really easy to read.
Oh, thank you.
Very thorough, yeah.
All right, so same for request reconsideration, is there any comments, changes, questions?
No, I thought that was fine too. I'll make a motion to accept the Hanson Public Library request for reconsideration.
Second.
Any more questions, Teresa?
So this is if somebody doesn't want something to be.
Right, if they want to challenge a material.
And then what happens to it?
So it goes through the process, it's in the collection development policy. So it would be, it first goes through, like, me and, and Julia.
You guys look at it first and determine.
Yeah, we look at it first to determine, and then if they still want to, you know, go further, then they have to do a written thing to the board here. And then it would be up to the board to decide.
Okay, but you vet these, how often do you get these?
No, we haven't gotten any, but it's so far. We've, we had a few, what they call informal ones, where people, like, bring something up and say, like, oh, I, like, maybe this shouldn't be in the kids section or whatever, but nobody's actually officially said, like, I want this gone or, you know, I want to.
And you would make people, they have to fill this out for it to go forward, like, you're not gonna fill it out for them, right?
Right, they, yeah, if they want to challenge it, they have to fill the form out and go through the process.
And then you guys look at it.
But this is definitely increasing in libraries, so that's why we really need to have something in place to.
Any other questions that's considered? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You may have missed.
Do you have a question related to that? Sure. Now, these get posted on the website, correct?
Yes.
And you made reference to a couple ALA policies and from those people.
Yes, they already put them on there, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. All right, so new business recap of town strategic planning, Karine, was it that? I missed it, but.
Yeah, well, the different groups met, heads of the departments and whatever group they're in. I'm in public facilities and we had the town, I was gonna say the town speaker, the town planner speak on different issues going around town. And, you know, some people added to the conversation and we had, like, we broke out in groups to discuss things. And in the end, we voted to take care of the highway department first because it's pretty much, it needs a lot of help. Building repair and new buildings. They want it centrally located where it is now, but, you know. And then we'll get the ball fields rolling at some point because the one right across is Botary, so that will have to move. And the school is supposed to come down in September. So, you know, where, you know, it was in total agreement that we need to take care of highway, we need to be prepared for the upcoming winter, should we, you know. Some years, we need the highway department a lot, and some years, we don't. So we'll meet again, I believe it's in July. So, no, maybe it's not.
Yeah, I think.
Does it do it?
I think it might be, I had it on my.
Yeah. We meet once a quarter is what it is.
I thought I brought it down, but.
And it was unanimous that they should be in the center of the town?
Yeah, it was suggested, so they, they only have to drive two miles out to the end here and then, like, it's actually from.
No, it's October, I have.
Oh, October, yeah, that's what I thought because of the summertime, right? Because a lot of people are on vacation. Like, from, I live, from here, it's four miles to my house. So, you know, they, they want it more centrally located and people agreed. They did talk about Hawks Ave. They talked about dry storage for one, I think it's the larger building. And that was like, maybe highway could use it, police could use it. Really, any department, if they have things that they could put into dry storage. Of course, it's a big building, so the, you know, the heating, air conditioning would probably have to be adjusted, I guess, in different areas. And the smaller building, someone has approached the town to possibly rent is like an educational place. Like, you know, I really don't know much about.
The police station?
No, this is way over Hawks Avenue, down Pleasant Street.
The light control?
Yes, yeah. I'm, see, I never saw those buildings, so I'm, I mean, I drive by.
Somebody's approached the town to buy that?
Yes, I think they, no, not buy it, rent it.
Rent it.
Unless I got that wrong, but I don't.
Under the terms of our acceptance, we could sell it for that?
I don't, no, it was received as a gift. And I don't believe they can sell it, but I think the town administrator and select board knows all that information. I don't know it. So, you know, it may be used for that, it may be used for something else. But, so that's where they're at right now. Oh, you, Pepper was there, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, I did convert that, yeah. Have to do that sometimes. So it was a good meeting and we'll meet again in October and hopefully McQuan will have been turned down. Hopefully, nothing comes up.
I know they are starting to remove asbestos, I think tomorrow or next week.
Great.
So, I could be starting on that.
Yeah. Did you get the email for the selectmen meeting tonight?
Yes.
Can you forward that to me?
Yeah.
I mean, I can't go, so obviously, but it's packed with cars and people. I was just kind of curious what the agenda was. So how's that HVAC?
Yes, so Charlie has talked to a company, well, the company that was gonna be putting in the new system and they're gonna be doing, until that gets done, they're gonna set up a maintenance contract. And they have started some work, they're gonna be doing, they'll be doing like preventative maintenance and then every, like, every year, they come out twice and get it all set up for the different seasons, like, change any filters, replace belts, you know, clean it all out, make sure it's working properly. So to get started, I was hoping you could approve up to $6,000 to get started on it. And then I think that the, each year, it would cost about $3,000, that's an estimate. Right now, we're still waiting on them to figure it out. We would, I've already talked to the town accountant, we can transfer some of our funds from excess salary funds and put that into, using it for expenses.
From the salary?
Yes, so, so and then there were, actually, the senior center had one of their units failed, so they had some repairs from that and that's included in the $6,000.
Couple of questions, so where are we exactly with new furnace, air conditioning?
I haven't heard anything from that, I think that it's that whole ARPA thing that they don't know.
Okay, so.
They said if they, they do preventative maintenance, well, they said, like, three to eight years is what they're estimating this, the units here would last, three to eight years.
The current year.
Yes.
But we know, but we had first, we were going to get new HVAC.
Right.
And new air conditioning because we are a warming cooling center.
Right.
And that's what happened.
I think, no, I think it's, that's still in the works, but they have to figure out the ARPA aspect of it.
And that is, who's figuring that out?
The town hall does that.
All right.
But I'll check with them again, because I don't know kind of where.
I'd kind of like to know, like, a timeframe.
Yeah.
Because that was presented, I think it was last year, unless it was the beginning, was it last year? The beginning of this year, I probably would have to go back to all the meeting notes. But, you know, I'm concerned because this area loses a lot of power. And we don't have a generator.
Right.
This area means geographically.
Yes, yeah, it, it does a lot. And it seems to be a lot of trees coming down on McQuan Street that knock out the power.
Yeah.
So if, you know, it's the wintertime and we're in rough shape, the library may not be able to help people because we might not be, have the heat.
Right.
You know, and.
Yeah, well, it's possible they could get a, like, a separate generator too, obviously.
Yeah, I think that would.
I think HVAC and generators are separate, you know.
Right, right, and we really do need that generator, even that, to get that to start us off. Because this summer is supposed to be very hot. You know, more hotter and more humid than last year. So I'm sure there'll be more people seeking out, you know, a cooler environment.
And there may be blind notes?
Yes, and the, you know, a lot of times what happens with seniors, they don't realize they dehydrated.
Yeah.
They need to drink all day.
Right.
I mean, in the last few years, you know, my mom, you know, we had to get her to drink water, they forget. And, you know, that's a concern, but if they stay in the house and they're not here, we can't help, yes, Diane.
Are you saying the generator is part of this or is that still going?
No, the generator is also, I, I'll ask about it, because.
We asked about a generator as well because it.
Because that was supposed to go to town meeting, wasn't it?
So the generator was turned down by.
Finca?
No, it was by, it was some, one of the funds that they were gonna use, they couldn't.
Okay.
So then they, now they have to see if, I think, maybe it was, maybe ARPA wouldn't pay for it, maybe that was what it was and now they didn't know kind of where.
I don't remember exactly, but Charlie did say to me when I was there one day that, don't worry, we're going to get, everything will be done, but, and, you know, I believe him, but what is the timeframe?
Right, yeah, and ARPA is, like, the government funds to pay for, like, different town projects and things, so, yeah.
I, we had a great idea to follow up with the time estimate. I'd like to see a little discussion of the generator possibly.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What they see ordering. What they see ordering and what they'll be able to cover for electricity when power is out.
Yeah, I did ask that when they, the one that they had proposed and it would pretty much cover everything. Like we'd be able to have like lights and the heat and the air conditioning or whatever we needed to. And then, a computer, yeah, it would basically take over everything that we had.
Was there a kilowatt value?
I'm sure there was, I don't, I didn't, I don't even know, that, that would just go, if I broke my head, so.
I just wanted to make sure you were.
So, it, I was requesting if you could approve up to 6,000 for them to do like all the preventative maintenance and, and to take care of the repairs, which.
I'll make a motion to spend up to $6,000 to have a maintenance contract and.
Well, to take care of the repairs and then, and then preventative maintenance to get it started. And then they'll be, like going forward, we don't know what that amount is yet for, per year, but.
Okay. Everything that.
That'll be kind of the setup cost is for that.
Do you have it all planned?
And then once I know the month, like the yearly cost or what they're expecting, I'll talk about that the next meeting.
Okay.
Now, just a question.
Yeah, I can.
Diane's seconded.
Oh, just a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, how soon might the replacement system be in place?
Well, that's why I'm asking for a timeframe.
Well, does anyone have any inclination, is this gonna be necessary if it's gonna?
Well, a lot of this money is already stuff like, like the senior center thing didn't work, like they had to fix that. And like some of it is already stuff we like have.
You've already spent.
Like emergency that we had to pay for.
Oh, right.
And then, then while they were doing that, they did a few preventative maintenance things, you know, expecting that we would get on a contract. But I mean, if we determine that that's not what we want, we don't have to.
Invoice one way or the other.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Alright, library building projects, I wanted to give you an update of where things are at. So, you probably saw we have some flip charts in the lobby and in the kids' room, we have one as well. We've gotten a lot of comments on those, which is great. We had the three focus groups, so we had 14 people for the Monday session, which is open session. Seven for the Tuesday morning one, and then 10 for the Tuesday night invite one. So, those are pretty good numbers, it's good sized groups. We had the half day, June 9th was the half day for the middle school, so we had like a brief survey that we gave out to some of the kids and they filled out some of those. Yeah, and then we're gonna be talking to Camp Kewaunee, the, we're gonna give, give them the survey as well, the kids that are hired for Camp Kewaunee. The gate attendants and the lifeguards, have them do the survey, give us some feedback. We have the survey out, unfortunately, it's been attacked by bots and spam.
Oh, you're kidding.
So, we've gotten a lot of like bogus responses, we have to kind of sift, a lot of them, it's easy to determine, we can just, you know, you know, delete them, cut, you know, cut them out. But we're gonna have to sift through some of it and kind of, you know, unfortunately, go through and.
So, has that issue been resolved?
So, we're wait, it's gonna be closing at the end of the week, so once it's closed and we export everything into Excel, then we can go through and like delete all the responses that are no good.
Yeah.
But it's just, you know, an extra step that we have to do unfortunately, so.
Do you know how many responses you've had, even whatever?
No, I don't know, yeah, it's, right now, we don't, it's all just mixed in, but.
Is this something that we wanna have paper copies of something at the midnight?
Oh, yeah, I suppose we could do something like that, yeah, or either like the survey or the, like the, the short questionnaire thing or the full survey, yeah. I'll, yeah.
I mean, I know we have some people that come from outside of Hanson that may not participate, but.
No, I'll make a note.
It's a different audience as well.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Also, I did a training for the application and so that, the application is opened and I've already started entering some of the basic information, just, you know, some of the easy stuff, getting that out of the way. I met with Lisa and Tony and, you know, we're talking to them about the, what the town's role, like what they're gonna need to supply to us. So, you know, there's certain like financial information, town policies, which some of them, I don't think they have some of the policies, so they're gonna have to. I mean, yeah, it's not, it makes your application look better, obviously, if the town shows that it has these policies. So, they're not technically required, but I think it's like 10% of the weight of the application, when they look at the application, the review process.
Well, that 10% is a lot.
Is weighted to things like that, so, so the town might have to, you know, so I'm gonna get that to them to figure out what we need to put in place. I also spoke to the MBLC, so, because one of, so we have, we have to have the two site options. So, one of them is where, is gonna be obviously here to like renovate and expand this area. And then the other one would be something like on McQuan land, is what we're, you know, the idea. Because one of them could be a shared building, that like, that's, we don't really, everything's up in the air right now, we don't really know. So, one of the requirements for that is you have to have an official management plan, which is something between the library and whatever other department is gonna be in that building. So, likely the senior center. So, we would have to have like legal counsel help us with that. And I did speak to the MBLC about what that entails and they gave me some guidelines, it's, you know, at first, I was like, oh my god, is it gonna be like a 20-page document? They said, no, 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 nothing like that, just, it's a pretty simple document that, you know, a couple pages that you can put together. But it does, you know, it does have to be done by legal counsel, so I was talking to Lisa about that. And I'll follow up with them again, but.
Would this number one be part of the library building plan? And two, is it something that Ruth can help out with?
So, the, the building, the pro, building program that Ruth is working on, that doesn't, that has nothing to do with the actual build. Like it doesn't need to know like if it's gonna be part of a senior center, it doesn't need to know if it's gonna be a new building or renovation, that's all separate from that. The whole point, it just tells you what you need, if whatever building you're gonna have, whatever it's gonna look like, this is what you'll need. So, it doesn't specify, just, you know, any particulars in that kind of, in those terms. And then Ruth is really just, right now, we've only hired her to do the strategic planning in the building program. So, I mean, she is helping a little bit, obviously, with the, you know, what's required and stuff, but that's not, her, the application's not her main focus. That's really up to us to, to do that. So, that's an update, is there any questions about?
No question, I just wanted to say I was on the McQuan reuse committee, well, that's now been abolished, and so I'm on the new committee, but I can't remember the name when I quit. So, but I'm on that committee. So, I'll give you updates.
Okay, alright, so yes, I think, you know, things, and then I think our, our next, once we kind of gather all this information, all the community input, well, you know, Ruth and I will be working on that and then giving it to the planning committee, we're meeting in July, mid-July, for them to kind of review, work over all that, so. And then start to form the strategic plan document. And then, our P, so Teresa just this morning sent me an update, taking, trying to take out all the design language out, so I'm gonna go over her, you know, her revisions. And then we'll send it to the MBLC again to have them just double check it and see if it looks okay from their eyes.
There are, no, I, so there are, there are some places where I just don't know, I left those, like I think we should ask. Because I think it would be beneficial if we could keep it in, but I.
Yeah.
And I spent some time trying to find a different RFP that more modeled without the design element of it, I just couldn't find one. So, I'm happy to get on form with them too and just walk it through.
Yeah, I'll take a look and then see what.
Seems like the MBLC is very willing to help.
They did, they said that they would go for it, make sure they didn't have any bad language. So, I kept, while in doubt that didn't, wasn't clear, I kept it in and then said, let's talk about this.
Yeah, okay.
In that way.
Alright, anything else? I guess then we're, so the foundation, any update, the foundation?
I've talked to Joe Harrington, we're working on setting up an account that we can send billings to and.
Could you speak up, please? What was that?
Well, I'm, I'm talking with Joe Harrington.
Joe Harrington?
From the Economic Development.
Oh, yeah.
And we're, we're going to set up an account where we can get our, submit our billing to and get reimbursed from.
Wait, I'm sorry, he's from Economic Development, from the town?
Yep.
No, state?
State.
State, Economic Development.
We got that $40,000 earmark money.
Yeah, okay, sorry, got it.
I guess I should have started with that. As far as the current bills, I suggest we just get them paid. We allotted 40,000 to cover that and we will get reimbursed as soon as the account's set up.
So, they have, you have to set up a separate account to have the money.
We have to, the foundation is, is going to pay Ruth.
Yeah.
And the Economic Development will reimburse us for the bills that we submit.
But is the account with the Economic Development, or are you talking to a bank account? Is it like on their, like an account on their portal or a bank account?
And, and they'll reimburse us by depositing directly to one of the accounts we set up for.
Okay, so I have a question, Linda, the $40,000 we agreed to set aside from the CD to pay whatever we need to pay, where is that exactly right now?
Mostly in fidelity.
Okay.
At some point, I have a question.
Well, to just finish what I was saying, so we will have to withdraw the $4,800 from there?
Depending when this account gets set up, how long is it gonna take to get this account set up?
You're gonna, you're gonna hold off paying Ruth, who's been working since May, until the Economic Development Council sets up the account? Is that what I'm hearing?
She already was paid $48,000, we reported at the last, at the last foundation.
So, how long does it take for us to get reimbursed, is what we wanna know?
How the account gets set up for us.
Right, what account, like why do we have to set up a different bank account?
No, we're not setting up a different bank account, we're going to get, he's gonna take the money, he's gonna put the paperwork through.
Yep.
And we get a direct deposit to whatever.
That account.
Whatever account that we, we give him.
So, then it just, we need to, where the money came out of, that's the account that you need, it's not setting up a separate.
Well, we're not gonna give him Fidelity account, or something.
Checking account.
Checking account, yeah, but you take that out, put it in a checking account, right?
Well, right now, there is money in the checking account. If we can get the turnaround time of paying Ruth, for instance, we paid her, we checked with cash. If we can get this reimbursement working and started, we won't have to dip into fidelity and that is my goal, hope.
Can I ask a little just a question, when you take from fidelity, you take it out and stick it into a checking account first?
With enough to transfer it.
Okay, okay, you don't pull it from fidelity to somebody?
Oh, no.
It always goes through the checking account?
Yeah, it would always go into the northeastern account.
Yeah.
And we've never done this, I guess we probably need permission from the directors for me to do it. But I don't understand, I'd like to know how long this is gonna take to get set up with Joe Harrington?
It's 14 days, about 14 days to be.
From now?
To be reimbursed.
You said that, you said it two weeks ago, 10 to 14 days to get reimbursed. But now you're saying Joe has to set something up to get the reimbursement?
I think he, Joe has, does set up, can do the paperwork for the northeast, not the fidelity, the, the, what's the checking?
The account information.
Do you have the checking account information?
You're on the account, you have it, I offered to do it at the last meeting and I thought I was gonna deal directly with Joe because I'm the treasurer and I have all the account information and the invoices to submit. And you could do a jar and you can access the checking account, get copies of the canceled check. But I offered as treasurer a last time at the foundation meeting to take care of it. And I thought the directors and you agreed for me to contact Joe and get this moving.
Okay, I'll get you, I'll get you his contact information.
Okay, I'll take care of it this way. Would you please also inform that as treasurer, you decided that, or the directors decided that I would be submitting the bank account information and the invoices for reimbursement, so.
So, he's not, so he's expecting a strange person?
Yes.
And can you take care of that when?
Thursday, I have an entire day off.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Except, except for my neurology exam.
Anything else from anyone else on the foundation?
If you're willing to, any emails, I don't know, maybe a call, but if you send them an email, you can copy me, that would be helpful.
I will do that.
But I didn't know, it says adults, so I held off.
Well, that's right, cuz there's alcohol.
Well, what?
Well, she's a junior director, though.
I've had my, Adam and his cousin's gone before, they were 16.
We've had other.
Yeah, and it's not adults.
On a table for.
Does it still say adult?
It says adults on the registration, like on the fly, it was on the program.
Oh, that, well, that's just like, it's, it means it's geared to adults, it doesn't mean that it's like restricted to, yeah.
Okay, do you have anything else on trivia?
Any additional tables sold?
We have sold eight full tables.
Oh, how many tables you have?
16, 18. So, I can get a table?
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably get a table.
And three partial, at one partial, there are five people, no, two partial, tables of five, and one partial of six. So, that's 11 tables.
So, that's really, yeah.
Right, so we're doing, okay, with all, I think.
Okay, and I'm gonna post it in front of town hall on July 10th, that's the earliest I could get for a week, till the 19th, actually, it's right being. And I'll repost the flyers this week.
And we'll hope it's in the express again this week.
Okay, alright, I have a few words about the foundation. We all know the foundation, the purpose is to raise funds to help build a new library. We have not talked about any kind of capital improvement plan. And I would like to see by September, some kind of information about what we're going to do or that you've made some kind of research to find out who can help us. This is, I think it's something that we're gonna have to bring in someone to help us with it, Linda had mentioned that prior. And so, this should be, agenda should be, it should be on the agenda for the foundation meeting in September. And we, we need to get this going. Lately, I've had several calls, texts, emails, bringing to my attention that, John, you're not answering emails, you're not returning texts. Now, we're all very busy, some of us go out to work every day, some of us are at home. We all have busy lives and we manage to get our emails and texts done in a timely fashion. I know that some people, like myself, when I was at work, I couldn't like respond to stuff like that. But when I came home, you know, I would double check, if there's something I had to take care of right away, I did. If not, I waited, you know, might wait till the next day. We're expecting you to do that and like last meeting, when you came in, it was 20 minutes of why you were late. We weren't there to hear about why you were late, we're here for the meeting. And the agenda needs to get out on time and needs to be complete when it's sent out. The directors that you're expecting something from, you need to have before you send out the agenda. So, if you are one of the directors that needs to pass in something, you need to have it done on time. I've had a lot of calls, like I said, texts, emails, I'm no longer the vice president, I shouldn't be having to handle this stuff, okay?
Is this, is this an appropriate conversation to have at the trustees meeting?
Well, I'm speaking under the foundation because we have to see improvements and Karen and I did discuss this before.
I, I agree, I don't feel that this is the meeting for foundation business like that. That's for the foundation.
I mean, I think we need to discuss it in terms of like for the next foundation meeting, so, I mean, briefly, but I don't know, I mean, it's up to the board to.
Linda?
I see what Diane is saying. I think some of Kareen's concerns need to be addressed sooner rather than later, like the timeliness of responses. I hope that John will be able to, on Thursday, take care of the contact things with Joe Harrington. He had said at the last meeting that it would be done. He had said at the last meeting that it would be done that week, two weeks ago.